Ready? All right. Seven o'clock, so I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Flatville for Tuesday, May 28th, 2013, and we will start with roll call.
Mike Den.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen.
Yes.
Dick Bonin.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
And Patrice Steiner is excused.
First item on the agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. A, minutes of the May 9th special council meeting and the May 14th regular council meeting. B is payment of bills. C, appointments to boards and commissions, and this evening the appointment would be Tom Knoll to the Plan Commission. There are other boards and commissions and committees where we would need, we do need citizens of Flatville to volunteer, so please check the city website and fill out an application form. It's not very complicated, but we would appreciate your participation. Licenses, one and/or two-year operator licenses this evening. So, one-year operator licenses, we have Deborah Chandler, Timothy Chandler, Cindy K. Martins, Hannah E. Runions, and Mark A. Wasi, I don't know how to pronounce that, W.A.S.I.C.E.K. Two-year operators license for Austin P. Cook, Janine M. Demmer, Cody J. Grabhorn, Lori K. Gratz, Mark G. Haig, Donald L. Lee, Teresa L. Lynch, David L. McCabe, Jane A. Mittendorf, Ann B. Malbert, Cody R. Moyer, Richard A. Myers, Jordan Oyen, Timothy Parsons, Harry Pothauer, Jack Pross, LeAnn Schultz, Steve Scadam, Morton Stevens, Cynthia Zeromsky, and a junk dealer license for Pauline Chandler and Sons. E is permits. We have a request for a parade permit for the Flatville High School homecoming on October 18th at 1:30 PM. And two is fireworks permit for July 4th, the 4th of July Committee. This is subject to a license renewal, so when you, when a motion is made, please note that that is subject to a license renewal. That's standard procedure, but the license does have to be noted.
License renewal of?
For the fireworks permit, as I understand it. For the vendors, is that correct, Jen?
Correct.
And July 1st is the date that it's normally renewed, and so we just need to note that. Is there?
And I would make one correction as you went down through the two-year operators licenses.
Yep.
It was Michael Myers, not Richard Myers.
Okay, Michael Myers, thank you.
That was my question, too.
Motion to approve the consent agenda noting the need to receive the license renewal from the fireworks vendor prior to issuing the permit, or giving the permit, I guess.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Den.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Bonin.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is citizen comments, observations, and petitions. The only registrations I've received are for subjects that we'll be discussing later, so we'll bring those individuals up then to speak. Next is then committee reports on Police and Fire Commission. If you have something to add, I will call on the council member, Mike Den.
I have nothing at this point in time. I was not available for that meeting.
Okay, the minutes are in our packet in all these committee reports. Ron Trigalli Board, Steiner is not here. Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Killian.
No additions to the minutes.
Museum Board, Stockhausen.
Well, they've sent out a letter for fundraising, and their task force is still resuming conversation.
Okay, and Redevelopment Authority, Doss.
I would note that the Redevelopment Authority is working proactively with the Bolts and has issued an RFP for development of that site.
Okay. Other reports in the packet, including the building inspection report and the department progress reports, does anyone have any questions or comments on any of those?
I have one question. It relates to building inspection department citations issued. Supposedly there was a trial, 524. I'd like in the near future a report on that, so that I'm informed, the council's informed.
Would you like that now verbally?
Well, if you do it verbal, that's fine.
Okay.
What I'm liking to find out is, are the violations, what were the violations, and have these been corrected, or what's going on?
Do you have the details of that, or?
Not sure which one he's referring to. This is the case of the Brownings, Browning Family Trust.
It says 524-13 court trial.
Okay. Those, the case was thrown out for some procedural issues. New citations were issued, so we'll still be working on the process.
We understand that that's a property you would like to see. Well, quite frankly, the city has minimum maintenance standards for our properties, and so if you don't follow the city code, it's our obligation to ensure compliance with city codes. Unfortunately, the first citations that were issued missed a statement that is supposed to be put on them, expressing how to appeal a citation, so the judge did dismiss that. And obviously, Joe mentioned, we were already starting the process over again.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll go on to the action items. The first item is ordinance 1310 repealing and recreating miscellaneous sections of the municipal code, replacing fee language. Joe?
Actually, oh, you want this?
Sure. The council recently approved a resolution to adopt the fee schedule, and what this ordinance does, it replaces the fee language in the municipal code throughout the municipal code, anywhere where there is a dollar figure, and it replaces it with language, allowing it to be replaced by, or be changed by, a resolution. So, all it does is put a statement in there, like, "A per parcel administration charge in amount is set from time to time by a resolution of the Common Council."
Question?
Did we adopt the resolution with the pricing in it last time?
Correct.
Is there a motion?
Move to adopt ordinance, I've lost my place. Move to adopt ordinance 1310 repealing and recreating miscellaneous sections of the municipal code, replacing the fee language.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
We'll vote.
Den.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Bonin.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B is a resolution 1319 approving a conditional use permit, Pioneer Lanes Outdoor Entertainment Area. Joe?
Okay, as we discussed last time, Pioneer Lanes would like to add a outdoor entertainment area, area where they could have bands or beanbag tournaments, they'll have food served out there, and so forth. They'll basically fence in an area that's currently a parking lot on the south side of their building. It'll be a double fence to provide a little bit more security for prevention of underage drinking and so forth. It will be seasonal, obviously, just during the times when the weather is cooperative. During the winter, the fence will be removed, and it'll just be a standard parking area as usual. There will be gates provided for emergency access. They will have additional restrooms provided as needed, garbage facilities and so forth, so they've met the basic requirements in our ordinance for outdoor eating and dining areas. There was a question at the last meeting about the parking. Since they are taking parking away, they will still have 110 marked spaces available, and I'm guessing they have some areas that aren't striped, they could probably get an additional 10 spaces, or 10 vehicles in there, so even outside of the area that will be fenced in, I'm saying they could probably get 120 parking spaces still available on site, which would be adequate for that use.
So, are you saying that that complies, then, with our code?
Correct, correct. This item was reviewed by the Plan Commission. They recommended approval with two conditions. The first condition, that the enclosure fences shall be made of a rigid material and a minimum of four feet apart, and the rigid material is just so that it's not easily bent over, so somebody can easily hop over them. And then they had just requested that there's be some ability to review the hours of operation if the city receives some complaints while it's under operation. So with that, they did recommend approval, and staff also recommends approval of their request for the outdoor entertainment area. And Joe Hack, the general manager for Pioneer Lanes, is here. If anybody has any questions for him.
Eileen?
Yes.
I went out, I took a look at this area, and I see no problem with it at all. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 1319 that we accept issuing a conditional use permit.
As proposed with conditions of the Plan Commission?
No. Because the fences that you already described would do what needed to be done. By adding the condition for the Planning Commission, for making a rigid fence like that, you're talking cost prohibitive, and you're putting chain link fences up and stuff like that, and this is only a temporary fence? And, anyway, correct?
Yes.
All right, so why would you want them to have to spend excessive amounts of money for doing something like that?
We have a motion to approve the conditional use permit, but without the two recommendations from the Plan Commission. Is there a second?
What would the fencing be?
What would the fencing be? It says it should be rigid materials. Snow fencing, right? Type of snow fencing?
Right. Like snow fence.
And that's still rigid.
I think.
Yeah. I don't see where this says anything about a chain link fence, it just says a rigid fence.
Which in my mind would mean snow fence, not plastic.
It was discussed at the last meeting about they wanted them to have a rigid, you brought it up.
It's right here. Rigid material, shall be a minimum of four feet apart, but it doesn't say chain link.
Correct, I'm just, from my side, I'm just wondering what type of rigid fencing. I mean, this is, well, I would consider somewhat rigid fencing, but does that pass? But you consider rigid fencing.
That has to staff that.
Well, my recollection of the Plan Commission discussion is they specifically mentioned they were concerned about the plastic fencing that is easily bent. I think a wooden snow fence would be rigid, that would hold up. That was my recollection of the conversation. But it's up to the council at this point.
Well, if that's what we need to do, then we can go along with the Planning Commission's proposal. How's that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So your motion now has been amended? Well, we didn't have a motion, so we have a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the recommendations of the Plan Commission. All right, so we have the two recommendations of the Plan Commission are now included in the motion. Any other questions for Mr. Hack? All right. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes.
Any clarification? With the conditions with the rigid material, does it include a wooden fence, or does it include the snow fence, the plastic snow fencing?
It's a rigid fence.
No.
As the Plan Commission stated.
So the wooden fencing?
Right.
Okay. Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is a part-time assistant at the senior center. Larry, did you want to speak to this?
I certainly can. I'd like to fall back on Connie if she has any things she can add to it. At our last meeting, we briefly discussed the idea that the Commission on Aging has made a motion and recommended that the city council consider adding a halftime position to the senior center staff. And the staff note before you today addresses that a two-thirds vote is needed to amend the budget to provide for that position, and the position in 2013 would cost approximately
I will note before we start discussion that we do have a number of people who have spoken in favor of the motion, or, excuse me, the part-time assistant. I'm just going to read their names, because no one has asked to speak. Jen Shea, Carolyn Bruegger, Carol, excuse me, Pauline Gerhart, Jill Goffanett, Milton Rui, Keith Kishir, Josephine Kishir, Judy Pierce, and Bob Pierce. All right, so council discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
How many hours total would this be per week for the three positions? You said three halftime positions?
Yes.
So that would be 60 hours.
Well, our two existing halftime employees are working 25 hours each, so that'd be 50 plus 20 would be seven. That's the way it's being proposed.
So it's just shy of two full-time people?
Sure.
Actually, with 32-hour work weeks at the city, it's actually over two full-time people.
37-hour work weeks.
Oh, 37-hour work week.
Well, at the last meeting, I raised the question about benefits, and as I understand, the benefits are pension, is that correct?
No, I don't believe there are benefits associated with this.
No benefits whatsoever?
No. The state of Wisconsin changed the regulation in 2011. I believe you need 1,200 hours a year to qualify for pension for WRS, the Wisconsin retirement system.
So, no benefits as far as pension or health?
Or vacation?
Or vacation.
I believe vacation would be prorated. Is that accurate? Okay. Your vacation and your sick time is prorated based on the hours you've worked?
I asked Milt to come up. Good. Milt, come up and speak to us a little bit on.
Well, he hasn't registered.
Oh, he didn't, right. Okay, I'm sorry.
He registered in favor. So, I know Connie Steinhoff is here, and certainly if you'd like to say something funny, I think, feel free to do so.
Well, I believe that you all received a copy of my memo in your packets, responding to Councilman Doss's request for volunteer, and how we use volunteers at the center to administer our programs. This request is something that has been in the staffing plan since its inception, has not been put in until, well, it hasn't been put in the last two budgets because of constraints, budget constraints, so we've been waiting for this position. And now that the money's become available, we would like to have you consider using it for that purpose. The Commission on Aging actually initiated the whole, the coming to you and the request because they see a need at the center and want to make sure that, that you realize that they're aware and they back what we do there, and they are backing this request as well.
I, I don't have a particular, I'm not particularly against an additional aid at the senior center. I am, however, against, in the middle of a budget year, especially after last time when people were asking for additional hours for other people, taking and saying that now that the money is available because of the assessors contract, there is money available because there were savings on the assessors contract, but if we approve this position, we're obligating next year's budget for not $6,000 whatever, but $12,000, I think, $12,800, and that's without any raise. So we're already saying we're obligating, without looking at any other needs in the city, that this then, with approval now, has the highest priority. I'm not saying it does or doesn't, I'm just saying that that's a very difficult thing for me to do in the middle of a budget year. I just, I don't think it's good policy, I don't think it's good practice to do that. If there were a need to hire part-time, limited-term staff to do projects, I have no problem with that, I have a problem putting on a staff member in the middle of the year. We had great debate at this council meeting when we gave employees a 1% raise, and frankly, that only passed on a 4-3 vote. That's how tight the 2013 budget is. Right now, our legislature is in debate about our next budget, and well over half of this city's budget comes through shared revenue from the state. And we really don't know what effect the state's decisions in the next month are going to have on our budget until after that debate. So I'm just, it's not that I don't believe that there's a need, it's just that I don't believe that this is the time, I don't think this is good policy or practice to add a position like this in the middle of the year, when there are probably lots of other departments that have the, have been waiting also, and could use this extra staffing. So I have no problem with approving some part-time hours for somebody to be hired to do special projects, but I just don't see doing this now on a permanent basis.
Well, can we possibly consider hiring a temporary person for the 6,400 for the rest of the year, just to see how that goes for you? And not put this down as a permanent person, just to try it out? If it don't work, you can, somebody can say, "We told you so," but.
Well, Dick, it's not that it wouldn't, wouldn't work, that's not my point. My point is that as we look at money and budget.
That's right.
That as, as, you know, we're going to hear from other departments who say, you know, "We don't have enough people to mow in the cemetery, we don't have enough people to clean the auditorium, we don't have enough people to..." And by saying, "In the middle of the year, we're approving this position," and now it becomes part of the cadre of positions of this city, without being compared or being evaluated, I think it's just bad practice and bad policy.
That's why I'm saying just temporary.
Like I said, I could see approval of an hourly wage for special projects that come forward.
Well, then let's make this a special project, so we can help them out for this year, and we can start over in January.
Well, I guess I don't think it's a special project in the sense I don't think the Council Doss is, is using the term.
With everything that's going on at the senior citizen center, and I know one of the reasons they're looking at this extra, additional, part-time person is because, so they can make times available for a lot of people that could utilize the senior citizen center, but they still work, so they have programs in the evenings and things like that, that they aren't able to do now. I really don't see a problem with that. Let's, I think it's a good idea to do for this, continue out this year, and then we'll have to deal with it at budget time, when budget comes around, but let's not, let's do it like Dick suggested, as the part-time position for the rest of the year.
Other comments?
Starting July 1st.
Okay, well, okay. I don't know how it's fiscal works, so you'll have to help me with that.
July 1st to December 31st.
Correct.
So it would be a limited-term employee?
Correct.
Or a defined-term employee, July 1 to December 31. And any discussion or inclusion, and at that point in time, I would expect a report to show additional activities that had been accomplished with numbers and things.
Any other comments? I would also note in the, in the brief description and analysis of the proposal that is before us, while it is true that the statement is made that the cost for the remainder of 2013 would be $6,400, the city could transfer funds from the city's Sessor account to cover his expense. In 2014 and beyond, the city funding would like to come from money saved through the implementation of the 2013 staffing plan and currently appropriated to the capital improvement fund. So, again, I think that as a council, we really need to be aware of the fact that one of our goals was to find ways to save money and reallocate that funding, and if we continually reallocate the funding to areas that we didn't anticipate spending the money on, then we will not, for example, have additional money for the capital improvement fund, and if that happens, then we are back to the situation of borrowing money that we were trying to get away from a little bit. So, I think that that's one of the concerns when we start adjusting the budget mid-year, that it takes away from the goals we had set at the beginning of the year. So, is there?
As I look at the job description, the job description really doesn't tell me that this person is going to do any kind of new special events. It's about decorating the center, answering the phone, making daily announcements on the PA. You know, to me, this should be, if we're going to add this position, it should be plans X number of new events between July 1 and December 31, that are outside the current hours operated by the senior center. If this is an additional position to serve additional seniors that aren't currently being served, then it seems to me that this position should be doing its activity at a time when the center isn't currently open.
Well, the last paragraph, oops, am I got the wrong, oh, that's, never mind, that's the wrong one, sorry.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, we do need a motion, and any vote to fund this position does require a two-thirds, excuse me, vote, because we are altering our budget, and that requires a two-thirds of vote of the council.
Can somebody tell me what the hourly wage is for $6,400? This is on an hourly wage?
$8.50.
$8.50? Okay, I make a motion, we hire a limited-term employee with a contract beginning no earlier than July 1 and ending on December 31, 2013, at the rate of $8.40 an hour, to assist at the senior center with new projects and new initiatives that are outside or in addition to what is normally being accomplished. So in, it would be in additional hours that the center isn't currently operating, and with programs that the center is currently not able to offer.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
I just, I want to refer back to that, what I said, I was on the wrong page there. This is in Connie's description letter to us, the last paragraph. "A second part-time staff member allows the center to provide extended hour activities and opportunities for a diverse and growing senior population. In addition, a second assistant would help with the delivery of services by one, avoiding closure due to illness, vacation, leaves, training, et cetera, and two, relieve the director of direct supervisor responsibilities, so more attention can be directed towards outreach to the growing senior population, volunteer management and administration responsibilities." That's beyond the letter that Connie sent.
Right. And I think that's what I just addressed, allow the center to provide extended hour activities and new opportunities for a diverse and growing senior population. So that was what was in the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Den.
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is award contract 513 sidewalk repair.
Yes. This involves repair of sidewalk areas throughout the city. What we do is we have two parts to this, one is the actual replacement of the actual slabs of sidewalk, the other is grinding trip hazards for the areas that we don't have replaced. There's a budget of $40,000. The low bidder was, is Ducharme Construction, however, speaking with references and other customers, city believes that, that this contractor is not a responsible bidder in the legal term of, in the legal terms. So the lowest responsible bidder for replacement of sidewalks, we believe, is Lounger Brothers with their bid of $35,801.70, and then the low bidders for grinding, Sidewalk Savers LLC, 6,400. What we're doing is recommending we reduce the number of grinds and sidewalk replacement to meet the total budget of... to meet the total budget of $40,000. So we're recommending award of five dash thirteen to Lounger Brothers to a maximum of $34,000. And award grinding to Sidewalk Savers for a maximum of $6,000.
Any questions?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to award the sidewalk repair to Lounger Brothers for $34,000 and the grinding to Sidewalk Savers for a maximum of $6,000. We'll vote.
Question?
Yes.
Have we used this Sidewalk Savers before?
We have not used this one, but we've looked at that one. Also, we've used a different grinding in the past, but this one is a different one.
Thanks.
All right, we'll vote.
Dan?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is a proposed tennis court reservation fee. Jordan or...
At the last meeting, you had asked to take this back to the Park Forestry and Rec Committee to recommend a substantial fee for tournaments only. And at our meet, last meeting, the committee is sticking with their original recommendation of $15 for two hours per court. I spoke with the UW club team. They were unable to have a representative available this evening. They seem to think that this is a fair amount and are in favor and willing to pay.
Okay, we have two people who have registered against reserving tennis courts, Robert Flirkey and George Curry. And we have one person who has asked to speak, George Konekney. Yes, if you'll come to the microphone, please, and just give your name and...
My name is George Konekney. I'm president of the Platteville Area Tennis Association. I think most of you are aware of what Platteville Area Tennis Association has done to promote tennis in the Platteville area. We've also, I think, been instrumental in the renovation and in the upgrades that have been done to the tennis courts. The problem that I personally have, we only have four tennis courts to serve the entire Platteville area. I don't object to the Platteville Tennis, or Platteville University having their matches and being able to reserve at a fee for their matches. I do have a problem with, as I understand the proposal is, to allow them to reserve and pay for the matches, or pay for the courts for practice time during the spring and fall. Many of our tennis association members and a lot of employed people and children play at those times in the evening during the spring and during the fall. And to take that time away from the Platteville residents, I think would be an injustice to what we've done to develop the courts and develop the, the interest in the tennis that we've accomplished to date. I guess that's, that's basically what my objection to this would be. Any questions?
Yes, I do, sir. Maybe you could let the people here know a little bit what you guys have totally done? Why, putting the lights up, resurfacing? Explain some of that in detail, because I think maybe some of the people don't realize how much money and effort and time you've put into the courts that the city didn't have to. So you really have a, quite of an investment in it.
I wish I could. I got involved with the tennis association last year. This year, I got promoted to president. It's a job everybody wants, right? So I came in on the back end of when all of the renovations took place. I do know from Larry Trine and others in the tennis association that a lot of time and effort has gone into the development of the courts that we have here. And again, there's only four courts to service the entire Platteville area here. And there are a lot of people, I don't know if any of you have noticed, but there are a lot of people that are getting very interested in out there. The courts are typically being used on a daily basis, all four of them. The tennis association, in addition, we wanted to develop a doubles league. And in order to avoid taking up the courts when others were playing, we're playing at six o'clock in the morning. So again, I wish I could address more the, the time, effort and, and monies that the association has put into the development of tennis and tennis courts. But I don't, I don't have any direct recollection.
I knew that they had done a lot. I just don't have the exact ones, so I can't speak to it. I just thought, there are some people here that do know that, but they've, they're out on the list of speak, so we have to leave it at that, right?
What did the university do before we even built them?
They didn't have a squad. They didn't, they didn't develop this as a team sport until the last two years.
Oh, okay.
I have a question of Jordan.
Sure.
Jordan, since the tennis courts have been here for quite a while now, what prompted us all of a sudden to decide to charge a fee for reserving the courts? Since they've been here so long and we haven't had that, but we do have it for our other facilities?
We, it came this spring when we got the request from the UW club team to reserve times for practice and an all-day tournament.
Okay, so it just, it came about because they wanted to use it, correct?
Right, we had sent our dates, or the dates that they were recommend, or asking for to PATA. And in a discussion with PATA, with a, with a member of PATA, they suggested we look into reserving the courts and, or setting a fee.
Thank you.
And again, I don't personally have any objection to reserving the courts for their matches. The problem is, they're talking about reserving the courts Monday through Friday for their practices throughout the spring and the fall. That I have an issue with.
I don't recall, and, and Jordan, I don't know if you know, and I do know that the tennis, the Platteville Area Tennis Association was very, we part, the city partnered with the Platteville Area Tennis Association in upgrading the courts. I also believe that there was a grant that was written to the U.S., maybe U.S. Tennis Association.
Yes.
I can't actually remember all of the, of the figures. I was opposed last, last time to this fee and was the person who suggested that if one, if someone wanted to have a tournament, or whatever you call, a tennis all-day thing where people compete, if that's called a tournament, that we establish a substantial fee. I cannot support a $15 per two-hour court reservation fee of this nature. I just don't think it's fair to the, to the residents to have somebody reserve all four courts at prime time every day of the week. I can't support it. I mean, you've already said how you wanted to have a doubles league, and so you found a way to do that at a time that you wouldn't...
Anticipate anybody else being there.
Yeah, you wouldn't. Probably the only people that have an issue with that are the people across the street who hear the tennis, but we haven't heard one.
Jordan, a fee, how does that compare to the rest of the recreation that we charge fees for field use each year?
For a ball field, it's $40. It's $40 if you want the lights on, an additional 40. It's 15 if you want the field lined. But that's the main, the ball fields are the main fields we reserve.
Then you're proposing that we charge a fee for everybody that uses the courts then, if they want to reserve? Or are you just talking about this tournament, the match tournament they want to have?
If any, you could reserve the court if you want to play at...
I'd get hurt.
I guess that's one of the questions I would have, Jordan. How, the UWP Platteville Club tennis team? Do we have some sense on how many days of the week and how often on the weekend they actually want to reserve this, these courts? And do they want all four each time, or how does that work? What have they been, I guess, what has their practice been there? Do you know?
They asked for Monday through Friday, three-thirty to five for practice and a Saturday for a tournament, an all-day tournament.
So one Saturday for the season, or...
In the spring. We haven't heard anything about fall yet.
So every Saturday during the spring? Or just one?
One Saturday.
One Saturday a month? Or just one?
It was just a one Saturday.
Okay.
But Monday through Friday, how many weeks?
That's a good question.
It was, started the first week of April and went through until they were done with school.
So seven or eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think for me, that's the bigger question. The length of time that, that they're asking to use the courts. I mean, if it's sporadic, I mean, so the fee may be less important to me than the length of time that they're actually asking to use the court.
But if, but if you don't put a fee in, then they'll come in and use the courts anyway. Is that right?
First come, first served.
Okay. So as long as the tennis team gets there on time and can beat out all of the residents, they'll use all four courts?
No, whatever court is not available.
Whatever court's not available, okay.
I have a good, another question for you, Jordan. Let's say you have, the courts are all full. Everybody's playing up there. You have them, the, the, um, club team comes up to use the court. They've reserved two courts for practice because they don't have the other people. Who's going to tell of the four people, four courts that are out there? Who, who's going to tell what group are going to have to leave?
We would number the courts, one through four, and it would be posted on the fence that says courts one and two are reserved from...
If I was playing tennis on court one, I'd been there about 20 minutes. And they show up, then I've got to go.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just like a park shelter.
What does the, would the tennis association or whatever, what would they like to see that? Instead of Monday through Friday, is there any certain days that they'd want that to cut back to? To allow them to use it?
I can't speak for everybody in the tennis association, just to understand. Actually, I'd like to see a first-come, first-served basis. You know, if, if somebody's on the tennis court and somebody else wants to play, they wait until a court becomes available, except for the matches. I do believe that in the match, we're only talking about one match on a, on one Saturday. I don't have a problem with that.
Any other questions or comments?
What about meeting alternate days? Having the UW meet alternate days? Like Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday? Has that been discussed?
It has not, because we've never had, I mean, if they ask us for the courts from three-thirty to five, we don't post anything. We just tell them it's first come, first served. They, they can go up and use what they, what's available. This fee would, would put that in process.
Well, it's obvious, since the tennis association started doing the upgrades, all of a sudden, there's been a quite an interest in using that facility. So that means it's only going to grow, so we have to make a decision.
I agree. I think there's good interest in using the, the four tennis courts.
And this group, I know this group, and they've been working really hard for the upgrades.
Yeah, they're to be commended, because they worked very well with the city to accomplish a great deal.
Thank you.
And I think an alternate day schedule should be used, so we don't exclude the UW team, a team sport, or not a team, they're a, so, aren't they a club?
Club, yeah.
Club tennis.
And this club could use it. And it still would allow for the schools, the children, to have access. Well, they have the summer, but, right?
Well, we need a motion here somewhere, folks. Or we take no action at all, I guess.
Are there more speakers?
I'd say we take no action.
There's no one else to speak? There were two other people registering against having tennis reservations. They would evidently prefer to see the current system be in effect.
What about that tournament or the match? You still want to charge for that?
Again, that was not brought out, so...
Will that work, to just have the matches?
Well, the question is whether it's better to continue with the current system, which is first come, first served? Or is it better to have a fee to reserve the courts? Because otherwise, whoever comes first, and if it happens to be a club team, they then could be there every day from three-thirty to five and every weekend, if they get there first. So there are advantages to having some kind of a reservation system. But if that's not the will of the council, then we would just stay with the system we have, which is first come, first served. So I will ask again if there's any kind of a motion.
Jordan, is that for this year? This year yet, or...
It would start effective, you know, immediately.
There's nobody here from the UW?
No, they were not able to attend.
So they're not interested?
It, that's what's going to be my remark, is they can't be that interested in if they're not here to represent themselves tonight.
They told me that the fee, the fee seemed like a fair solution, so...
Well, I think we should just go with the first come, first served. And if they come forward for a match, they need to pay the appropriate fee and do whatever procedure you have for reserving for a facility.
Actually, Barb, there is no facility fee for the tennis court. That was what I suggested last time, was let's forget about the two hours and what have you, and let's just establish a tennis court reservation fee if you're going to have a tournament, match, or whatever it's called, for a day. And if it's, I, I don't, I don't know what is reasonable. I don't play tennis like Dick. If I tried, I'd hurt myself. So I don't know what is reasonable. As a reservation fee for four courts, I, I really don't know. If it's the same as a baseball field, and if it's $40 to reserve one baseball field and you wanted to reserve four, it would be $160, then it seems to me, may, I, I don't know if that's a reasonable fee or not. If you're going to do a match and you want to do four courts, maybe it should, all day, maybe it should be $40 a court or $160. I don't know. Because I don't know what a reasonable fee for that kind of thing is.
You were shaking your head.
Me?
Yeah.
I think we should just, it's a mute deal, stay where we are, first come, first served.
All right, I'm going to ask one more time if there's a motion to address this. Otherwise, it will remain as it is with no fee.
They're not here, so it should remain as is.
No motion, we're going to move on without taking action on that. Next item is contract for the TID district recommendations. Joe or Larry Joe?
Yeah, I'll take this one. As we've been working on the, the analysis for the TIF districts with Vandewell and Associates, there, it seemed like we reached a consensus on the, between the council and the economic development partners to proceed with several of the recommendations that were discussed and suggested by Vandewell. So as staff had requested that they submit a scope or work proposal to do the additional modifications or amendments to the districts, so they have submitted that more detailed scope of work with the cost associated with that. They, they did break down their proposal as far as, you know, per district, per different items that could be broken down if needed. But I think the, the intent and the understanding as we were going through this that it would be all done as kind of one project. So they do have a, an overall cost not to exceed $14,300 for all the amendments to, that were discussed for TIDS four, five, and six. The city staff did get a call from MSA Professional Services about this. They must have heard it on the radio or seen it in the paper. Since they had done some previous TID work for the city, they had inquired if they would be allowed to submit a proposal as well. So we said, "That's, that's fine, we don't have an issue with that." Even though they were a little bit behind as far as, you know, the discussions and so forth. Um, so we said, "That's, that's fine, we don't have an issue with that," even though they were a little bit behind as far as, you know, the discussions and so forth. Uh, but they did submit a proposal. They had some different modifications suggested than what was the consensus of the group. Um, so I don't know if you looked at the details, but there was some differences to that. Uh, I was a little concerned with their proposed schedule. It's a little bit later than we had, uh, indicated as desire to make sure we get in under that, uh, August fifteenth deadline. Uh, but their proposal came in at a range of twenty-six to twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, since they had submitted a proposal, because they had done previous work, Veerbecker was kind of in the si- same situation they had done work in the city before. So, I actually contacted them. They did not contact us, but just to see if they had any interest in submitting a proposal. Uh, they declined. They thought that at this point, they viewed it as a extension of Veerbecker or Vandoval's work, so they didn't think it would be appropriate for them to, uh, submit a proposal at this time, so they did decline. Um, based on the, the two proposals that we received, I, I clearly think Vandoval is in a better position. They have a better understanding of the work that we are requesting to have done. Uh, the work that they've done so far has been, uh, outstanding, I think. Uh, they've addressed everything that we've asked them to address. Their proposals are very good. And I think they are in a, clearly a better position to proceed with the work, in addition to their proposal being cheaper than MSA. So, uh, staff would recommend that we proceed with the, uh, proposal from Vandoval and Associates to complete the amendments to TIDS four, five, and six, as previously discussed, with a price not to exceed fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars. Any questions?
I'll make that motion to approve the proposal from Vandoval to complete the amendments at a price not to exceed fourteen, three.
Second from Dick?
Second over here, yeah.
Any, uh, questions or comments from anyone? All right, we'll vote. Den?
Yes.
Adas?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Gillian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, we're onto the information. The discussion portion of the meeting. The first one is Resolution thirteen oh two, amending the city employee handbook, which relates to overtime.
This, this was briefly discussed at our last meeting at a work session. This was, uh, actually originally tabled from January, uh, when the city council reviewed this and decided that they'd like to delay this discussion until, um, sometime after May, but not later than June. Um, what you see before you is a proposal that came from staff, uh, regarding an amendment to the employee handbook regarding overtime, and how overtime is handled. Um, at our work session last, uh, uh, last council meeting, it was asked that we provide copies of, uh, what was our, our former union, AFSME, and their union contract, so that you could compare how overtime was handled prior to, uh, two thousand and eleven. Um, after that period, it went to the handbook, and a copy of our current handbook is in here as well. I believe that's, uh, employee handbook version five dash eight dash one three. And, uh, so we've tried to provide the information you were looking for, and, um, I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to the next item, which is the resolution amending the city employee handbook miscellaneous provisions, emergency closings.
Yep. Uh, this was also brought up earlier this year, uh, where the city council tabled it to talk about it at the same time as the other handbook amendment. Uh, so both amendments are coming back to you. Uh, we discussed this closure policy briefly at our last meeting in the work session. Uh, it was requested that I receive a copy of the class cancellation and campus closure policy. Uh, I've done that and included it in your packets. Um, the city's policy is much shorter, um, and, uh, I guess what I'm proposing is, uh, in my mind, perhaps easier to implement. Does anybody have any questions regarding the proposed policy?
Um, while it may be easier to implement, I do believe there should be a mention of essential operations and essential personnel, uh, relative to our closure policy. I, you know, I don't necessarily believe that all employees can be sent home, or could be allowed to go home, in emergency situations. This covers a lot more than a typical snowstorm. It could cover tornadoes, it could cover all kinds of other, uh, emergencies that might exist. And I think that, uh, identifying those personnel that are essential to the operation, or having some method of that, should be a part of this amendment, so that they're, so that's discussed beforehand and not after the fact.
So, you're referring to the last line where we, the statement is, "When the decision is made to close down city services, all non-essential employees are expected to vacate the workplace for their safety and the safety of others." You're saying you would like to have the essential?
Yeah, it says all non-essential employees. Every employee may say, "I'm non-essential."
Well, I, I think that judgment isn't up to the individual employee.
But it, it doesn't really say that anywhere.
Isn't it necessary to staff all positions, even if you're closing things down, so you have somebody in all positions, especially since this is a city?
No.
It's not. I think it is.
Oh.
And here's why. You have to have so- you need somebody in the street department. And Barb made a good point. This is not just for snowstorms. This is for anything that could be happening, any, any tornado, um, flooding. We've had flooding here before. All kinds of, you might think it's stretching, but if you're putting this in, it's got to cover everything. You can't just have one for snowstorms, and we'll have one for tornadoes, and we'll have one for this, and one for that.
When, when, when people think of the city, uh, a lot of times people think of emergency services or public works department. But there are a lot of departments that are not essential, that we wouldn't have to have on duty during an emergency. Um, like a snow emergency, for example, we would encourage senior center staff to stay home. Uh, that we shouldn't be encouraging seniors to be out moving about in the community when the roads are slippery, um, it's treacherous driving conditions. Uh, and that's an example. Um, the libraries.
Obviously, that's their own choice. We shouldn't, we shouldn't choose for them. It's their choice.
The policy is saying that as a municipality, uh, we're making the decision not to open the senior center. And then they are not to report to work. It, it is, it is our choice as a employer whether or not we want to be open that day.
That's fine if you're Walmart, but this is a city of Platteville. You need the department heads to be there anyway. Not necessarily senior citizen center. I agree with that, okay? Because that's, that's a service, okay? Not quite like the police department.
Right.
The city grounds and crew, okay? The water and sewer plants, uh, this sort of thing. So, I, I don't, you need to, to allow yourself to have staffing in all those positions, even if you do send people home, other people home. You can't just say, "Oh, everybody goes home."
Well, it, the policy was never intended to make that statement.
It doesn't say anything different than that.
It says non-essential employees. So, at the time of the emergency, depending on what's happening, uh, it's expected the city manager to make that call. Um, we don't need the museum open today, we don't need the rec department, we don't need the senior center. Um, but we do need the police department, and it's a snow emergency, so you, so we need all the public works people available. We need the parks people to help clean up. Um, if it's not a snow emergency, it is possible that we might not need the public works department. Or, or maybe it's, it's an issue where, um, city hall, the furnace broke, so we want to make sure the city hall departments aren't reporting to work only to be sent home again. Or if it's a, uh, emergency, um, maybe you have someone from the public works department coming to fix the heat. Um, it just seems like with the variety of emergencies, that this might be something where you want to ensure you have the flexibility to determine which employees come and which ones are, are sent home.
Then I would suggest that a sentence be added, or a couple of sentences be added to this that say something about the determination of essential personnel. Because at that, when I read this, it says, there is, there is nothing in this that says someone will determine if you're a s- essential personnel. And if you are so determined, you will be required to stay. That's, there is no, there, it may be, there is nothing in here that would lead me to believe that. So, I would suggest that this be writ- rewritten to reflect that.
Rest of the council feel the same way?
Say, for example, all non-essential employees that are determined by the event are expected to vacate the workplace. So, it's going to vary according to what the event is.
But it, it should also say who will determine who is an essential employee.
But it, the, the essential employees may change.
Right.
So, you'd like me to tweak the second paragraph to im- to add who's making the decision on whether it's essential or not essential?
Right.
As well as what it depends on, and, and that would be the event, whether it's the emergency. What type of, and based on the type of emergency.
Yeah.
Actually, I think that follows a little, um, more closely the, um, information that we, that we have in our packet from the class cancellation and campus closure policy for UWP, where it does say authority, and it, it states clearly who has the authority to cancel a class or to close a campus, and it has a chain of command. So, maybe something similar to that.
Okay.
That, what we're thinking, perhaps?
It also talks about essential operations.
In your direction, Irene.
Essential personnel.
Say again?
If, uh, if you look at the information that the university pres- yeah, we, it's included in our packet, because they have a class cancellation and campus closure policy. And they say who has the authority to cancel classes or close the campus. They separate even out the pa- the Pioneer Farm, because it is separate from the campus, and perhaps you can get into class, but you might not want to be driving out to the Pioneer Farm. And then they also have, uh, information about how they notify the, uh, campus and the public about whether or not the campus is closed.
And, and it also has a point where it says, "Specific areas of operation need to continue even in the event of an emergency."
But perhaps something, uh, and again, I, I didn't look at the handbook to see whether or not we have that information in there. Maybe it's not necessary to include all that in our resolution. But if it's not included, it would certainly be good information to have in our handbook, I think. So, yeah, I guess if, uh, I think the consensus is pretty much to, to take a look at that, or clarify it. Okay, resolution approving the twenty twelve compliance maintenance annual report.
This is a, uh, this is an annual resolution that, that is required by the DNR, uh, regarding our wastewater management activities. Um, our, our crews do an excellent job. We have a grade of B, uh, only because of a cup, a single, uh, overflow event. So, um, the Water and Sewer Commission has reviewed this and is recommending adoption of the resolution.
Any questions on that?
Just what the situation was on the one.
Oh, um.
Is there a page number you're going to be looking for, or is it numbered? Yep.
Yeah, let me see exactly where that was. Oh, uh, it's on page twenty-six. Um, it was on Stonebridge Road. There was a piece of debris that was lodged in, in a sanitary sewer pipe, and it caused a backup that overflowed out a sewer manhole in a grassy area behind, uh, Oak Ridge Apartments. It's just something that happened. I, I don't know why it was there. We normally inspect places on a regular sched- schedule, but, uh, it just happened to be there.
That's good.
He is ordinance amending the official traffic map. Uh, no parking here at a corner on Adams Street?
Yes, we've had, um, concerns about, uh, the intersection of Elm and Adams Street. Uh, a few weeks ago, we had a citizen, uh, talk about that here under citizen comments. Um, back in June of two thousand and twelve, we passed an ordinance, uh, that would basically leave one stall, uh, west of the last driveway there by, uh, two eighty, uh, West Adams Street. Uh, in that year, there have been numerous occasions where a large truck has been parked in that one stall. It blocks the site distance for people stopped southbound on Elm Street. Um, uh, they've managed to learn to look around it, but, uh, um, but it's very difficult, and there have been a lot of near misses. So, um, we've put up a, what we're considering option one, which is to remove the parking stall completely, uh, in a letter to the property owner. Uh, we've left the option that if, if the owner comes in and, and explains to the council why that parking stall is needed, uh, we could allow a no trucks, vans, or SUV stall in that parking lot to help lower the height of the vehicle. But, uh, I have not heard from the property owner whether they intend to be here for this meeting or the next one.
Do you know if the large truck belongs to the owner of the property? Where's how?
Most of the time.
I do not know that for certain. I, I guess Mr. Bonan does.
What'd you say, Dick?
Most of the time it's his.
It does?
Since we need, we're going to address this issue, why don't we just, excuse me, Ken, go ahead. I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Well, then, if the owner realizes you'll lose the spot, then maybe you'll do something about it.
But he's got two stalls on Elm Street, and I think he's, I don't know, that stall behind him, east of the house, that is, or that belonged to the other house? It's got to be the other house, doesn't it?
I'm not certain where that, uh.
Yeah, there's two there.
There are stall, there's a garage on, off of Elm Street with some area in front of the garage itself. They've been using that for construction materials lately.
Joe, something?
Howard, since we're going to address this issue anyway, I've had near misses there myself, because I use that a lot. It's not just the one pickup truck, okay? Here, a couple of weeks ago, there was a big white van that was in the third stall, and they were there for three days. The white van, okay? Why don't we just simplify the whole thing and put up a sign stating, "No trucks, SUVs, or vans in any of those, what are they, five or six stalls right along there?" Because by doing that, then the people that would be coming from, off the stop sign by the OE grade school and coming straight down, then you could also see them. Even if we just remove this one stall, you can't see those folks coming down from that stop sign when you pull out. You have to be so careful. You'd be able to see them coming around the corner on to Adams Street, but you still can't see those other people. So, why not resolve the whole thing and just say, "Hey, nothing but cars in those, what are they, five or six stalls up to the bicycle shop down at the corner?" And that would simplify the whole thing.
I think there's only three stalls that we're talking about, but, uh.
I'm, I'm adding the other two, by the bicycle shop.
That, that's, that's your prerogative, if that's what you wish. Um, we've had.
Real safety issue.
We've had some discussion regarding that in the past, and, and there has been a concern by the owner of the bicycle shop, because that would, in essence, eliminate parking for, for that business location.
It's not, they park cars there.
Well.
We're not eliminating their parking, we're just changing it.
That's fine.
For the safety of everybody in the community. Or we could wait till somebody gets smacked there.
What I'm hearing is you wish me to present an option three for consideration.
Yes, please.
Any other comments on this item?
Do we know if the property owner is in the audience? Evidently not. Okay. Didn't know if they were familiar with the procedure of having to register on the green sheet, so.
All right, next item is award contract eleven thirteen, gazebo painting.
Okay. This involves scraping and painting a gazebo. It was included in Park's maintenance outlay account. Uh, we had three bidders attend the mandatory meeting. Only one bidder submitted a bid. Um, the only bidder is Pierce Precision Painting, in the amount of fourteen nine ninety for the base bid. for the base bid of, in essence, the white portions of the gazebo, and forty-nine ninety for the alternate bid for the green roof areas. The project budget would only cover the, the base bid. It's a little bit higher than what I had originally thought it might be. I've done some, some references. I do not have any issue regarding any of the references. I did talk to them regarding their schedule, his schedule, if he was awarded this project. He said that if the weather cooperates and he could get in there early on a Friday morning after a, after a music in the park, he thinks that he might be able to get it completed by Wednesday evening, but that's if he has good weather that whole week. Otherwise, he could possibly make arrangements to have power cords come out to the, to the grassy area if the, if a concert wants to be held and needs that power from there. But that's, that's what I've been presented.
Is there, and this contract was let this late because, I mean, we, we authorized this in the budget already, so. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned. I know that there are concerts scheduled, including our own city band, so to speak, concert on the... Twenty-second of June, and then we have, so, I mean, every week on, there's another concert scheduled.
Yeah.
And, I mean, somebody has contracted for those and paid for those.
I understand. The confusion is mine because in the past, when, when we've had a contract for work that's been authorized in the budget, we have allowed the award to take place at the first meeting instead of the second meeting. That has recently changed. If that were the case, we would have awarded it at this council meeting, and these folks would have had enough time to, to do the work prior to the first thing. So that, that's, that's my error in not having that ready.
Was there any statement to why the local contractor wouldn't bid?
I did not hear anything from, from that person, and I'm not sure that it's appropriate for me to, to ask that.
Okay. Next item, twenty thirteen, Platteville Emergency Operation Plan. This is your nice thick packet in your council information. I don't know if someone wants to talk over this or not. Brian, it looks like it's heating up.
I have a question.
Okay, I have a question. Larry or Brian, either one, I guess?
In this document, what is changed from the previous one? I couldn't find any changes indicated.
We didn't provide all the changes because it would be another forty to fifty pages probably of changes.
So we don't know what's changed?
I can get you a copy of everything that has changed.
So if, are you asking if something could have been highlighted in some way to indicate a change?
In dark print, what's new? What's new in the document?
When you're dealing with such a large document, if we showed you everything that changed, it'd be significant. Perhaps an electronic file, we could email you a copy that shows underlined or...
Well, for, for, to go through about, what, a hundred pages here?
Yeah.
And I don't know what's different from the previous one. That's my point.
I understand your point. Why were there so many changes if this is a standard form every year?
It hasn't been reviewed for five years.
Okay, that's a good answer.
So there, there are so many changes, Brian, you're saying that it's really impossible to just highlight like ten of them or something. It's, I mean, i- is there something really major in here that the city council needs to be aware of, or...
The big changes were to personnel as far as who had what because of positions having changed. So it was some of updating that. It was putting in alternatives where some of the positions never had an alternative. It was identifying people that could hold the alternative position that if the primary person wasn't available, who was going to fill that position during that event? It was under the Section B, the Communications and Public Information, or Public Warning. It was updating where all the sirens were located. I'm not sure when the sirens were changed, but in the old plan, all of them were in different locations. The emergency alerting system, that was something that was added. Updated information about the radio stations, who has generators, their contacts. A lot of the changes were the emergency contacts in Appendix One that just says due to the information provided in that section. It was redacted because of home and personal cellphone numbers. It also updated as to the disaster management. It took the references to the finance director being in charge of the damage assessment and putting it under community planning and development, where they have the knowledge, they have the detailed knowledge for damage assessments. And keeping those records. And I know under the EMS section, it added RMAS casualty plan. I updated the hazardous materials section as well. There's some changes there. The fire department updated theirs. Public Works went through and updated their information, making sure it was current and up to date. Each department that was identified went through and reviewed everything and made the changes that they felt were necessary that in, so that in the event of an emergency, we're doing the things in the plan that we're currently doing now. So we're not going backwards to what they were doing, or what was being done previously.
Did the initial plan follow a model that was provided to you?
This plan is, as it is now, was based off of the county's emergency operations plan that the emergency management director had written or helped write for the city of Platteville prior to two thousand and eight. So this is the same template that was used for the two thousand and eight plan. And the county's plan, we followed the county's plan.
So this is available online?
No, I don't believe we put it online. Will we be planning to?
I'm not sure. I sent it to...
I guess, you know, if you want it online, we can do that. The, the city council packet is online, so in some sense it is. We'd rather not draw a lot of public attention to how we're gonna handle emergencies. I guess in some sense that there are weaknesses to that as well. What was it, Homeland Security gets into how you handle emergencies and what information should be public and what stuff shouldn't be. I, I guess this one's probably pretty well redacted, that we could probably publish this if you want us to.
If someone had asked about it, if they wanted to read it, they, they could get a copy.
Sure, the one in your, in your packet is public knowledge. We can distribute that on the... What we don't wanna do is alert people as to how we're gonna respond in specific situations so that if someone were looking to do an act of terrorism, they could figure out how to respond and find out how better to do it, so.
It's generally, it's general that these are not necessarily published in public. And they're, they're available, but it's general that they're not...
And, and I guess that was really my question, if somebody really wanted to see it, it would be available. And, and referencing Ken's question about whether or not the changes, you know, if you wanted to look at both, I think it's available if you, if you want to talk to Brian, so you could...
The other thing I think that would be helpful is if we, if we maybe scheduled a work session for our next meeting for Brian to walk us through the various chapters and what it means. And if you guys wanted to go do that, I, I think that'd be a, a good step in helping to understand and to learn more about the plan. It certainly has helped me all of the time I've spent with Brian learning this.
Brian, I have a question because I'm really new at this. Do you list the sources of your, that could be emergencies in this for your own help? Such as your hazmat stuff in different industry, different places throughout, even like the university would have hazmat issues, okay? Do you have a list of all, where this stuff is located? Is that part of this, or is that something different?
There are some agencies or some organizations that have, that send us their EPRAK plan, which is information, Walmart is one of those that because of the material that they have, they send us a notification every year as to what they have at their site.
Is that something you just keep separately, then that's not part of this?
No, that's something separate.
I, I wasn't sure what this all entailed. Thank you.
So is there a desire to have a work session? Is there a desire to have a work session to discuss this more in depth?
I recommend a work session since I'm new at this.
I know that.
Okay, all right, we can try to schedule that then, Larry.
Yep.
Next one, remodeling the finance, water, and sewer office.
Do you wanna do it? Good. The, the current situation where we have now with two, two offices and only basically three personnel trying to demand the offices, it's, it's kinda difficult, especially if a person's on vacation or, or sick, whatever. It'd just be better overall, the, and as I understand, the city council has decided to stay here at City Hall. We'd like to have something changed in our office. Now, all the other three entrances, like the city manager's office, the department of public works, community planning, all have one entryway. We basically have two offices, two entryways to staff, and there's basically three people that are handling that. And it's very hard to get cross-training when they're basically in two separate offices. So what we're planning on doing, or after I talked to the city, new to the finance director, we discussed this and came up with a plan where we take out the, the walls in the back of the water and sewer area. And the reason we picked that aside is because it's two feet wider than the finance area. And it's also the first door coming in on the left as you come in from City, from outside into City Hall. This is a plan that we come up with, we talked to the city manager about it. Something we'd like to propose to the, to the council.
I have a question. So at the counter, will there be two people? Somebody for water and sewer, somebody for finance?
We've had, we've got two different plans we're working on. We haven't finalized it. One is like a staggered one, where basically Julie would be up front, Bart would be like partway back on the right side, and then Pam would be towards the back. The other proposal we're looking at is having two people up front, having some type of divider between the two, but that'd be a little more congested that way, but that might be the way to go to.
The other aspect of this is to combine finance with water and sewer so one person can do both responsibilities. So to answer your question, you asked if you're gonna have one doing water and sewer and one doing finance, the answer is no, we're gonna try to combine them so that one person does both, and then you just have more of them in case you need backup or, or if you have a line.
Anybody have any idea how hard it'd be to take some of that vault out or open it up so you, archway or something? I know it's, I don't, I don't... Solid concrete or block?
It's all concrete, yes.
It'd be nice to have the vault out of there. We haven't gotten a price. I assure you, it'll be a lot more than what we're looking at for the, the proposal in front of you. If you wanted us to try to find a price to remove the vault, we can. That's solid concrete walls from floor to ceiling.
Excuse me, Larry, this came about by one of your changes that you made, combining things, moving personnel around and everything else? So now we have to go ahead and remodel too?
Yeah, I think it did.
Because maybe we didn't need to do that?
Well, right, prior to this, the utility office and the finance department were separate offices, and what we're trying to do is consolidate the two departments.
Don't you think it's an issue when you move people's salaries into the water and sewer department, put part of their salaries there, then it doesn't show up in the city budget as much? Then when you need to go to an upgrade, you just go, oh, we need to apply to the commission for increased water and sewer money, okay? And then you can tell the people in Platteville, oh, we couldn't help it. The commission awarded us this increase, so now we have more money. So you keep moving more salaries into the water and sewer department, which are not necessary. I, I have a real problem with you doing that.
I haven't gone through any water or sewer rate increases yet, but I can see your point where that would...
I can look at it on my water bill.
Yeah, all of that was approved way before I was hired, I believe.
We had two in the not very distant future.
Okay. The reasons for those, I, I'm sure we can find out for you. I, I suspect it's the new water tower.
I understand why, but I'm just saying it's a way for you to hide that because then you move a salary out of the city budget instead of letting it sit there. So now, now on top of that, this is just a little trickle-down effect. Now we need to spend money to remodel because we're gonna put both offices in one spot? What was worked fine before the way it was, before you made these changes?
Right. The two thousand thirteen staffing plan called for the consolidation of these two departments.
I saw that, I was hoping we could change that.
So that we could reduce staffing and cut back on costs. If the council wants to revisit that plan, you're welcome to do that. We can change that. I, I guess that was the direction I was following.
Well, I'll see what I, how to do that. I'm learning as I go.
I have a question about this remodeling project. We've been talking about upgrade, dip, changes at City Hall for a long time. And every time we talk about this, we talk about sprinkler systems. Now, all of a sudden, we have this proposal and seventy-five hundred dollars, and we don't have to have a sprinkler system? I mean, I'm having a little trouble here with understanding, you know, why we perhaps can't do anything in this room, but we can do something in this area.
That's a good question. It comes down to the interpretation of the architect on how the rules are written. It has to do with the changes of use or the changes of occupancy. In this particular proposal, it would, it is office space now. It would stay office space. The wall that's being removed, I believe, is a temporary wall. It's not a, a floor-to-ceiling permanent one. It only goes up to the lowered ceiling and doesn't... Am I correct on that, Duane?
That's right.
Okay. It's not a, a foundation wall, so it's not a, is considered as big of a change.
To, uh, there, I don't know, maybe, I just missed it, but there was no sketch or drawing or anything in my information as to what you actually are proposing. And I guess I would like to see a sketch or a drawing. The other thing I would like to have some information about is who you believe is going to do this work. Is this work that's going to be done by current str- s- city staff? Is this work that we're going to do some kind of contract for? How is this work going to be accomplished? So I guess I have those two questions.
I, I, I agree, those are good questions. We'll follow up with you on that. I think what this task note does is, or this fiscal note does, is it raises a much larger question. What is our plan for remodeling? And is this something we wanna invest money into if we're gonna remodel it as a comprehensive approach? I, I guess I anticipated that someone would raise that question as to what is the plan for City Hall? Because that's something I think the city council needs to give staff some direction on.
Well, and I believe there was a report from a university group. Unfortunately, my job took me out of town on the day that that report was given, but I don't believe I've heard too much about that since. So perhaps that is something we should be having a work session about.
And actually, we discussed presenting that report tonight and decided with everything else that we have in the work session next that it would be probably a bit much to include it tonight, but I agree that I think at the next meeting, we certainly could bring that report forward and present it to the full council, and, and so that then would allow us to discuss this as well.
But I would like to see a sketch at least of what, what's being proposed.
Okay, the only other note I will make is that you do have on your desk a budget for the All-America City Awards. And I guess if you have any questions, certainly, I'm, I'm sure that Larry could try to address them now, but it was requested that once a, again, a preliminary budget was put together, that city council be given that information, so that is in front of you tonight. that is in front of you tonight. Still kind of a work in progress, but it's getting closer.
I, I would have, I mean, this, there is a budget here. Again, I would believe that it's time that somebody talk, talk about the people who are going to be, and will this presentation be given to the council prior to its being delivered in Denver? I would think that that would be a good plan too.
I think it's certainly possible very easily to get a list of the individuals that are going, I'm not sure about doing a presentation before them, but we can talk about that.
Make a good dry run, you know?
Did that today.
All right. All right, that concludes the televised portion, as they say, of our meeting and we are going to go into a work session, but we will take a five-minute break before we do that. And the work session will consist of two things, discussion with the Grand County Sheriff on dispatch services and discussion on the roundabout remnant parcels. All right, five-minute recess, folks.